It's nine o'clock. I call this meeting the Upsher County Commission to order. And we'll have a moment of silent meditation, prayer, followed by a pledge of allegiance and approval of the minutes for June 15th, 2017, and June 22nd, 2017.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Do you all have an opportunity to read the minutes?
I have.
Any additions or corrections? I'll entertain a motion if we approve the minutes for June 15th, 2017, and June 22nd, 2017.
So moved, second.
We move to second at all my favor, shaking five of the saying aye.
Aye.
Those who know, aye, say aye. We have scheduled appointment at 9:15 with Eric Robinson. Eric's telling the recovery discussion procedure to discuss procedures to dispatch record services. We'll move on with items for discussion, action, and approval until 9:15. Item one, approval approved county financial institution and depository as required for West Virginia Code 7-6-1, Freedom Bank, First Community Bank, JP Morgan Chase Bank, Premier Bank, Progressive Bank, and Citizens Bank of West Virginia. So I have a motion to approve.
So moved, second.
Then moved to second at all my favor, shaking five of the saying aye.
Aye.
Those who know, aye, say aye. Item two, correspondence from Michelle Bass, Michael Bass, control ward, enclosing depository bond of First Community Bank for the period of July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018, for deposits in the name of the sheriff of Upsher County. Approval of all terms and full content within the letter of credit from First Community Bank for the period of July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018, in the amount of $980. Does that need approval, Perry?
Yes.
Not a motion to approve.
So moved, second.
We move to second at all my favor, shaking five of the saying aye.
Aye.
Those who know, aye, say aye. Item three, correspondence from Stephanie Brown, member service manager with West Virginia County Risk Board enclosing the West Virginia Court Self-Insurance Renewal Package. Review and signature of West Virginia Association of County Group Self-Insurance Risk Board cover sheet to member agreement. Item four, do we need an approval on that? Okay, motion to approve.
So moved, second.
We move to second at all my favor, shaking five of the saying aye.
Aye.
Those who know, aye, say aye. Item four, approval and signature of Usher County Basic Order Agreement for Courthouse Network Support, Administration and Counseling and Consulting with Global Science and Technology effective July 1st, 2017. This service will be billed on a monthly basis in the sum of $1,198.
That's the same contract that had increased for the last two years.
Yeah, okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
We move to second at all my favor, shaking five of the saying aye.
Aye.
Those who know, aye, say aye. Item five, approval of Usher County Development Authority appointments. Upon approval, the terms will begin July 1st, 2017 and end June 30th, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
We move to second at all my favor, shaking five of the saying aye.
Aye.
Those who know, aye, say aye. Correspondence from Doral R. Caprite II, Usher County Emergency Communications Center Director, requesting the appointment of Brandon Seawolf and Megan M. Langer as full-time telecommunity caterers effective July 9th, 2017. Upon approval, their hourly rate paid will be $11 per hour. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Could move to second at all my favor, shaking five of the saying aye.
Aye.
Those who know, aye, say aye. Seven, correspondence from Darian Howe, BU recreational park lifeguard announcing her resignation effective June 21st, 2017. Does that need approval? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
We move to second at all my favor, shaking five of the saying aye.
Aye.
Those who know, aye, say aye. Act of the memorandum and tablet to our very assistant administrator requesting the seasonal confinement of Senator Barlow as lifeguard for the 2017 seat at the Buckham Lapseover Recreation Facility. Upon approval, Mr. Barlow will begin work on July 2nd, 2017, and will receive the hourly wage of $9.05. Motion to approve.
So moved, second.
We move to second at all my favor, shaking five of the saying aye.
Aye.
Those who know, aye, say aye. Item nine, approval of grant, granting leave under the Family and Medical Leave Act. Item may lead to executive suspension per West Virginia Code 6-9-8-4. Do we need to go into executive suspension? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
We move to second at all my favor, shaking five of the saying aye.
Aye.
Those who know, aye, say aye. For your information items, item one, correspondence from Judge Gary Johnson, Judge Gary Johnson, West Virginia Police Security Board Chairperson, announcing the award of support security fund grant to the Usher County Commission in the amount of $71,525 for the purpose of enhancing the county's court security.
The application submitted was around $80,000, so of course there was a slight provision to the budget they approved. However, we haven't gotten those budget documents, so I can't tell you exactly what portions of the project were approved and which were not.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Item two, correspondence from Angela J. Brady, Usher County magistrate, announcing the resignation of Geneva Pegs, who was paid out of the workers' check fund detected June 14th, 2017.
I would like you to approve that so we can put it in the file, please.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second that, buddy. It's been moved to second at all my favor, shaking five of the saying aye.
Aye.
Those who know, aye, say aye. Item three, express release from Capito, deliver expanded broadband to Barlow, Landau, and Usher County. Takes just a minute to elaborate on that some. This is a, this is a pretty big deal for the Development Authority and for sending Capito. And I should basically like to thank Rob Hampton and Shane Meyer for the work they did on the, on giving this grant. I think the grant itself was like 900 papers, wasn't it?
No, it was, I know it was over 700 pages.
And they, they put a lot of time and effort into it, and it's going to be a great thing for the, for people of county. Item four, Usher County Animal Control Humane Officer Dog Report from May 2017. Item five, Louis Usher Animal Control Facility cat report from May 2017. Item six, Usher County Mileage Report from May 2017. Item seven, newsletter and/or event notifications. Item eight, agendas and/or notice of meetings. Item nine, meeting minutes. Item 10, meetings. And I'll wait, I'll make one note, the Currie Library date is 7/26 instead of 7/27, they're reading. Item 11, appointments needed or upcoming. Tabled items, we still have the U.S. Census Bureau local updates, Census Addres Project table. I don't know if she's ever going to be back with us. Any questions we have?
She has till the end of the year, I believe. Kind of response.
I thought we had until the end of the year to decide over one.
I think that's how it's going to work.
Okay. Our next regular meeting of the Usher County Commission is July 13th, 2017, at 9:00 a.m., Usher County Courthouse annis. The regular scheduled commission meeting on July 6th, 2017 has been canceled. Got some bills tied up. Still look on there for about five of them, 9:15.
Morning, George. How are you?
Good, how are you?
How are you doing this morning?
Good, good.
How are you doing today?
Just made it.
Okay. It was 34 cents of interest. Is that what, directly to the account or is that what, state or the address?
Okay. So it'll be divided just as a, so you may see a small increase.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's it?
Thank you.
I can't, I cannot.
Thank you.
I can't, I cannot.
Thank you.
I can't, I can't.
Share one, share all.
Yeah, I stopped there.
These, these consumers, taking the nap.
Tried to do that a while.
There, there.
Forget me.
All right, buddy.
Good.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, man.
We had a lot of good listeners the other day.
Herman?
Oh, man, man, lots of good listeners today.
My phone didn't ring.
I would, well, be ask where it was.
I would enjoy you.
Now, we both, we all happened to end up at KFC at the same time.
Hopefully, your kids are good.
Wow, that's so true.
They're in the house.
I don't care.
I'm just kidding.
Never could get into that thing.
How about you?
The group.
I should see all that.
I should see all that.
Jackie, do you have a gun? You always sit there with your bike, which is...
No, I, I don't have one. He's not with me.
Come on, I'll give you a gun.
The general allow her to carry it in this building, unfortunately.
It's 9:15. We have appointment. Let's not mind this here. Mr. Eric Robinson, Eric's telling and recovering to discuss procedures to dispatch record services. Mr. Robinson, pick up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, I'd like to start this off thanking everybody for giving me the opportunity to be here. Second of all, last time I was here was back in September last year, we had an open discussion about this. Is this how this is going to, out of the day, is it going to be a discussion or is I just stating my feelings over the situation and going on, how's that going to pan out?
We don't know.
We don't, I haven't heard anything. It's a working progress, we hope.
Yeah.
Okay. Saturday, the 24th of June, was called out on scene of next to St. Clairtown. Vehicle over the embankment. Embankment, there's no road blockage whatsoever. Comes in to call, I get next on rotation call, I accept the call, and give them an ETA of within 30 minutes. At 7:27, 8:00, I was in route. At 7:44, I was on scene. Arrival time was 17 minutes. At 7:43, one minute before I show up on scene, the officer that was on scene, and before I go any further, I'm not going to mention any names, I mean, won't incriminate anybody or anything of that nature. We just want to state the facts and go on with it. The officer said that during my ETA was unacceptable. Back in September when we had our meeting, we all come to an agreement of a 45-minute arrival time for next on rotation, which somehow in the rules and regulations set by the county did not get put in the rules. So that may be or may not be an issue. However, when I was asked to stand down my arrival at 7:43, they contacted another towing company to show up on scene. I showed up a minute later, and the officer makes another missed judgment call and has a second towing service route to stand down as well. Now, upon him making that decision, I was under the impression after showing up on scene that everybody was worried about their well-being and their safety. I am too. However, it could have been handled a lot different than it was. There was no vehicles in the road. That thing was down over an embankment 30 feet over the hill. They could have very easily staged at the state police barracks and waited however long it took the towing service to show up on scene. And nobody would have been harmed in no more time than it took to go remove the vehicle and clear the scene. But they chose not to. It was their decision to stay there, block the road, all that good stuff. However, upon my arrival, I'm talking to the officer that asked me to stand down, and he wanted to know, I don't know if this is common procedure or not, Sheriff, but, you know, he wanted to know if I was going to go ahead and hook to it after he asked me not to show up. And my direct response to him was absolutely none. I was merely following his order. So I was waiting for the next guy to get there. Now, from the time he called for the second guy to the time that he also asked him to stand down, he made his decision in less than a minute. There's absolutely no thought in that process, would you agree?
I'll just sit there and listen. No, no, I will respond.
That sounds great. Anyway, we're, I'm talking with the officer on scene about, you know, the way I would have liked to see this issue shake out. And the fireman comes up to me and says, basically, I was speaking out loud because that officer's got a badge on his shirt, and he can do whatever he wants. Well, the last time I looked, every officer, whether you're city, county, state, doesn't matter, sworn in to do two things first, service and protect us. And each one of you work for all of us as a community, as a whole, all right? So for the fireman to come up and say that, and for the officer to agree with it, is more unacceptable than a 30-minute ETA. Now, from the time I showed up on scene from 7:44 to the morning of the incident. From 7:44, fans of lack of information from approximately 8:01 to 8:02, the other towing company showed up, which is roughly 15 to 20 minutes. But I had to wait on that second company while I was already there. I've done showed up, I've cleared the scene, been gone before the other towing company ever arrived. I'm not here in front of you guys today to make a decision upon myself, or seven of us on rotation. I'd like to see us all get our fair share of everything and for it to be done fairly. What can we do to fix this issue? I'm asking not only the commission, but the sheriff as well. I mean, we're all in this together. What can we do?
Let's hear what the sheriff has to say.
I'm sorry?
I said, he wants to know what we do. I said, no, no, we want to hear what the sheriff has to say.
I'll be glad to speak.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to, first of all, I appreciate Eric coming here today and sharing his concerns with the commission. But bother me, gentlemen, first of all, this did occur this past Saturday morning. This scene was a dangerous, it was in a dangerous location. Very, very little visibility, northbound or southbound. Corporal Kane responded, Theron. And once he was on the scene, he made a public safety discretionary decision. He thought the call of 30 minutes would not work for the first responders that was already on the scene. And for the, for the safety of the public, this is why he chose to go back to comm center and request another record. After this event occurred Saturday morning, Theron contacted me at my residence and told me that there was a situation. He explained his side of the situation to me. He indicated to me that Eric was pretty upset and that I would probably be hearing from Eric in the near future. Of course, I was home all weekend, phone didn't ring. Came to work Monday morning, expecting to have a phone call or a visit from Eric. Nothing. Now, you know, I've been sheriff for four and a half years, and I've had several citizens that has had concerns or complaints on my officers for whatever reason, right or wrong, doesn't matter. But we have been able to sit down behind closed doors, and we have talked about these problems. And 90% of the time, when the meeting was adjourned, we were able to shake hands and move forward. So just a little disappointing to me that I was never contacted by Eric. It seems to me that he basically just backdoored me to get to you, gentlemen. If he would have came and met with you, maybe we could, maybe we couldn't. If we'd at least sat down, I would have loaned him my ears, and we would have discussed the situation. Now, for me not to support this officer, I won't say that. I do support his discretionary call. The firemen, first responders, they didn't want to be there in that location. It was dangerous to them directing traffic, no matter where you're at, it's dangerous. It's also my understanding that Eric never lost his turn on rotation. Yes, he appeared that morning, but he was put right back on the possible list. So I have other concerns here, too. It's, it was very obvious when Eric left that scene and he went back to his residence, he wanted to vent to somebody. Wasn't to me. He turns to his social media, and some of the statements that he made through social media has upset me. One in particular, and I don't know why you say it, Eric, I don't know if you believe it or not, but you have alleged the Usher County Sheriff of being on the take. And my question to you is, what do you mean by being on the take? Because whenever you accuse my officer, my officer of such a matter, you're opening up a can of civil liability. You better be able to back up exactly what you said. If you can explain that to me today in front of these people, I'll listen. If you want to explain it to me behind closed doors, I'll listen.
What's your definition of take, Sheriff?
Pardon me?
What's your definition of take?
Okay.
Can you, if you're on their side, can I answer your question?
Yes, I'll be glad to read the quote that you, you and another party on social media, such as Facebook.
Correct.
Won't mention the other party's name, but he stated to you. But I think the officer's getting a little money on the side. Your response. You said a mouthful, this quote, you said a mouthful because we sat, we sat in the roll back waiting on traffic to flow. There was something that exchanged hands. However, when it comes out, it was probably going to be a registration card instead of their sheriff. I have an explanation for that.
Please.
While I was sitting in the roll back after the other towing service had loaded a vehicle up onto his roll back, and ladies made them getting ready to go, the officer walked around to the backside of the vehicle. The tow truck driver walked to the back of the vehicle, and something exchanged hands. I don't know what it was, I couldn't tell you. But from hindsight, from my point of view, the way I was, the way I felt that I was treated that day, and then what I seen that day, did not appear to be the way that this whole thing should be handled. I mean, I was informed by comm center after the officer requested me to stand down that they were going to contact the next on rotation with a quicker ETA. It says right here in black and white, officer request for said towing company. I mean, I'm just, I'm not trying to make accusations, I'm just trying to talk like I said, you know what I mean?
He did it, and right.
And if anybody's offended, I apologize, it's just the way that I see things happen. I mean, I hope that I'm wrong. But from my point of view and the eyes that I see and the way that I interpret it in my head, I'm, I'm more hesitant.
I can guarantee you, Eric, that you're wrong. That sheriff, first of all, I wouldn't tolerate, I could not, would not tolerate actions like that from my officer. I can guarantee you that they don't get a share of any money other than their paycheck.
Okay, that's good.
What you seen out there, I don't know. Like I said earlier, he was very upset.
I was.
That's right. Not only Theron told me that, but other... Pardon me?
What's your definition of take?
Okay.
Can you read it there so I can answer your question?
Yes, I'll be glad to read the quote that you... You and another party on social media, such as Facebook.
Correct.
Won't mention the other party's name. But he stated to you. But I think the officer's getting a little money on the side. Your response. You said a mouthful. This quote, "You said a mouthful" because we sat in the roll back, waiting on traffic to flow. There was something that exchanged hands. However, when it comes out, it was probably going to be a registration card instead of their share.
I have an explanation for that.
Please.
Well, I was sitting in the roll back after the other towing service had loaded a vehicle up onto his roll back. And ladies and gentlemen, getting ready to go. The officer walked around to the backside of the vehicle. The tow truck driver walked to the back of the vehicle. And something exchanged hands. I don't know what it was, I couldn't tell you. But from hindsight, from my point of view, the way I was... The way I felt that I was treated that day and then what I seen that day did not appear to be the way that this whole thing should be handled. I mean, I was informed by comm center after the officer requested me to stand down that they were going to contact the next on rotation with a quicker ETA. It says right here in black and white, "Officer request for said towing company." I mean, I'm just... I'm not trying to make accusations. I'm just trying to talk like I said, you know what I mean?
He did it, and right.
And if anybody's offended, I apologize. It's just the way that I see things happen. I mean, I hope that I'm wrong. But from my point of view and the eyes that I see and the way that I interpret it in my head, I'm more hesitant.
I can guarantee you, Eric, that you're wrong. Sheriff, first of all, I wouldn't tolerate... I could not, would not tolerate actions like that from my officer. I can guarantee you that they don't get a share of any money other than their paycheck. What you seen out there, I don't know. Like I said earlier, he was very upset.
I was.
That's right. Not only Theron told me that, but other first responders that was there on the scene.
I was at fault, I was a little...
So that's why I say... That's why I've already said here today, I wish he would've came in, contacted me Monday. We could've sat down. You and I, I believe you and I, if we'd sat down, sat down and had a cup of coffee for an hour, we could've worked a lot of this out.
Very well. But the last time I was in a meeting here, if I can say Denver, you know, we had a member of the city police department. We had a member of the state police department. We had a member of the DNR service. We had a member of every towing service. But there was one branch of law enforcement that was left out. And that was the counties. You guys are located right downstairs. Nobody could come up here to represent us. So I felt after that meeting that rubbed me the wrong way with that or them. I figured this time it was no need for me to try to contact you over the matter. I figured that we needed to take it to these guys because they set the rules and regulations. And I figured that it would probably be best for my concern to go straight to the horse of the mouth, if you will, see if we can get something done.
Do you have a copy of the towing policy?
Yes, policy.
Sure. I'll read this to... In the policy, it says nothing about a 30 or 45-minute ETA. The only saying that speaks about time... Once a tow service accepts a call, they must depart their location no more than five minutes. Now, that's the only time it's mentioned in the policy.
Correct.
Okay. And notifications shall be made to the Epsom County Communications E-911 Center once they are en route.
Correct.
Did that take place during this call? Because it's hard for me to read this sheet with everything we've got without a sheet.
He was notified at... He was notified at 7:26, 23. 7:26 that he had an accident rotation call. They requested an ETA. He said he'd call back in about 10 minutes. He called back in 7 minutes and 40 seconds with a... within 30-minute ETA and requested the location of the accident again. The second call took place at 7:33.
If the tow service company or operator does not immediately answer the call from the E-911 Center and confirm the availability of towing services, the towing services will forfeit and forego that call as per established rotational list. 7 minutes is immediate.
It was 7 minutes and 40 seconds elapsed between the first call and the second call with an ETA, and then he requested the location again.
Sheriff.
Thank you. I think this new policy went into effect last fall. I don't have a date.
September 29, 2017.
And I'm standing here thinking back over that period of time. I don't think we've had very many situations such as this. Maybe comm center. But I, you know, if they've been in the links out there, they haven't come across my desk. But I can tell you that when this policy was put in place, date and time, it was explained to my officer that it's very important that they follow the procedures of this policy. And I believe that my officers... I believe my officers understand the importance of policy. And I didn't hesitate to tell my officers that you are the investigating officer out there on that scene and you are responsible for the safety of all. You're in charge. It's like in so many different roles in law enforcement, you have to make a discretionary call. That's what Deputy Kaneer did Saturday morning. And now, can we sit around as we are today and Monday morning quarter back the issue? Of course we can. We could do it with so many different issues. I don't have a whole lot more to say here today except my officers will continue to follow, do their very best to follow your policy.
That's in the policy. That's what will be my next thing. In order to provide for the public safety and welfare, law enforcement personnel located at the scene have the right to override a request made by an operator or owner of a vehicle and specify a towing service to be utilized. Now, I'm much sure maybe we should've jumped down to the next on the list.
It was...
You know?
It was an officer requesting that.
The dispatcher that he spoke to knew, and she misworded it wrong on the phone call to him. She said it was an accident rotation. It was actually an officer request for the next. Is what happened there.
And Eric, in the last paragraph of the policy, I know that they asked you to stand down, but you went ahead and responded, okay? The last paragraph says, "If the towing service company or operator responds to a call, they must accept the vehicle unless there's an equipment failure or other circumstances outside their control that prohibits them from transporting the vehicle. If a towing service company or operator refuses their vehicle for any other reason, they will be suspended from the established rotational list for a period of six months." When I look at the call sheet, it says, "Advised that Eric's towing that had accepted the tow but would be there within 30 minutes stated that ETA was unacceptable for him. Call Joe Jeffries." Then down here, it says... Officer request Jeffries. Jeffries and tell him he can... 10:22. What's 10:22?
Disregard.
Cancel.
Cancel.
Okay. They are saying Eric's... They're saying, which in parentheses Eric's, meaning you, that they are not going to take it. Go ahead and keep Jeffries coming. You were on scene.
Yeah.
For public safety, for public safety, you shouldn't be...
Read the last paragraph again. I'll read the sentence here for you. Unless there is an equipment failure or other circumstances outside of their control that prohibits them from transporting the vehicle. Now, that sentence there clears up the fact where the officer stated for me to stand down my route. If I hadn't brought it upon myself to go ahead and continue to the scene, I'd have never been there to accept it or deny it.
But you did show up at the scene. You have a responsibility as a service to the people for their safety, too. You just stood up.
I did. I reported to the scene.
Right.
But I did report to go to work. I refused.
And then what you were... You're in the record business. You were there, and you could have taken the car.
I could've cleared the scene before the other guy got there. However, the officer on the scene made a decision for me. No, the officer opted for me not to do it. I did. I was willing, that's why I was there.
Did he ask you to take the car?
He asked me to after they already contacted somebody else. They accepted it. They took that car. They followed.
And he told them to stand down, and you refused to take the car.
He didn't tell me that he told them to stand down. He told me, or comm center told me.
I think you can read through this conversation that we're having here today. Yes, they might've been... Definitely different opinion. But I think the officer was tempting. His mindset. I wasn't there with you, but I think it was his mindset. Let's clear... Let's get this scene cleared up immediately before somebody else gets hurt.
Which he has to do.
I think...
I think that we're getting... You know what I mean? I can see fault on both sides. You know what I mean? 7 minutes for somebody to get called up and jump in a record? I know the policy says 5 minutes. I'd like to know when Jeffries got the call, when he got his record responded, and if it was within the 5 minutes. Because a lot of times you're home in bed. By the time you wake up, you gotta get your clothes. You gotta get down. You gotta find out where it's at. I see problems on both sides. And first of all, if you would've happened heard the officer tell you to call another record service, immediately you should've called comm center and said, "I'm just a minute away."
Yeah, I stayed in my location where I was at.
When he told you to stand down?
He didn't tell me directly. I got that order from the comm center.
Were you to stand down? Did you tell comm center you was within a minute?
I told the comm center I was at the rally at Hardee's, and I can be there before anybody else. For somebody to have a quicker ETA than me, I've got to show...
Did they tell you, did comm center tell you, "Go ahead and stand down"?
Comm center told me to go ahead and stand down that they had another record service that would beat me on scene. That's why I continued my route. Now, if it would've been another issue that, let's say, for instance, you know, somebody was actually on scene in another tow truck, and, you know, they already got the issue handled, I'd never even went to scene. This would never become an issue. But when I was informed that there was somebody that was going to beat me and I knew better, I had to do a scene for myself. I mean...
And of course, the second mistake I see in this, you know what I mean? Is once you got on scene and the officer said, "Go ahead and hook to it," I understand that you was upset.
Correct.
But you should've went ahead and hooked to that vehicle. Because you did get the first call. You responded as fast as you could, and you certainly beat the unrecord service there by 15 or 20 minutes.
Correct.
Which is, your time is unacceptable. Unrecord service would have to be unacceptable also because you certainly beat them there. Now, I understand that... I understand being an officer sometimes. You know what I mean? You want to get it cleared up so you can handle the next call. And the first thing you think of... And I've been out there where 30 minutes has been unacceptable.
I agree.
And I have chose record, too. You know what I mean? Because you want to get the load cleared for safety. I see mistakes in this, you know what I mean? And maybe the officer should've said, "Is he in route?" And you would've said, "Yes, I'm here at Hardee's. Be there in 5 minutes." But with all this being done, and I've seen where the vehicle was over the hill at just before you get to the VCI office down over the bank. It wasn't on the road, you know what I mean? The officer could've stayed back at LT or whatever and waited till a record showed up. I understand that. But that is the officer's call. I mean, to sit there and wait till a record in that situation doesn't really make it any better. You know what I mean, as I look at? But there's several mistakes that I see that has happened here. You know what I mean? Comm center told you to stand down before Jeffries came 10:00. Comm center, in my opinion, should've said, "Eric is already at the light Hardee's." You know what I mean? Jeffries hadn't even came 10:00. They could've contacted Jeffries and said, "Go back to bed." You know what I mean? Because he... And Joe would probably said, "Fine." I look at the call sheet here this morning from record services, and I see that Jeffries gets most of the calls. That has been an ongoing thing here ever since I've been county commissioner.
Correct.
I can assure you that...
Some of those calls are...
I understand, I understand that.
Because I've analyzed the numbers, too, and I thought, "That looks a little steep on one side."
Yeah, I've seen that. You know what I mean? But it's always that way. So I can see mistakes in everybody's... From comm center, I mean, if they knew you was 10:00, when they called, then they should've told... Theron, hey, he's already at Hardee's. You know what I mean?
And I will say, you have to understand that comm center is a logistical office at this point. We are relaying all this information. All this information is being transferred back and forth. You know? The duty of a telecommunications at that point is just following the order of the officer. If the officer requests a tow company and then cancels said tow company, we relay that to the tow company. Eric proceeded on his own. You know? And that information was relayed to Theron as well because Eric was coming in hot. So we wanted to let the officer know he's en route. And at that time, you know, the officer is still saying, "Get... 30 minutes is unacceptable. I want a different record service." And so at that point, we are literally just fulfilling requests of the officer.
So in other words, if I understand this way, you told the officer that he was already en route in his record, headed to the location. And at that time, the officer said, "That's unacceptable? Send me another record, call another record out?"
He was informed that Eric was en route to a location. Eric did make it known to our dispatchers whenever they called to cancel him that he was not going to be picking up any vehicle on scene. He was just going up there against the air grievances. And so that might've been the reason why Theron went ahead and continued Jeffries because he said he wasn't going to...
Because you also conveyed that to the officer that Eric wasn't going to pick up the vehicle. So in that case, if I would've been standing out there, I would've said, "Give me another record officer." There's several mistakes here. You know what I mean?
And I'm not trying to figure it anyway. I just want this thing to work like a well machine like it should be. You know what I mean?
And sometimes...
Here's the way I think, sort of. I think if it played out when he got to the scene. Okay, I understand you being fired up. But if you would've just taken the vehicle, okay? Taken the vehicle, you would've got the business, take the process of the way, you know, that you should've. And then you could've came to the sheriff or ourselves and said, "Hey, look, this is kind of the way this went down."
With the officer making, you know, a decision in the time period that he did, also done the same way to decision.
I understand.
You know what I'm saying? It happened.
I know, being fired. But just being fired up, Eric, I mean, that's not going to make it any better. I mean, that's going to put the officer who's trying to handle an accident scene on the defense. You know what I mean? And you know how that's going to go.
Yeah.
I mean, when you come and it's obvious that the comm center, that you were pretty upset.
I look. I mean, I've done accepted a call that, you know, that I was wanting to go take possession of the vehicle.
And I see, because we're reading down through there, I completely see your point.
Right.
I understand why you're upset. But I think that if you just would've... When you got there, whether he told you to go home, whether he asked you again, "Take care of the vehicle", you just should've taken care of it and then come. Either the sheriff had expressed, you know, the fact of how this went down, he probably been like, "You know what? They probably could've handled that a little differently."
And I would...
But you got skewed. Hold on a second. You got skewed because of the fact that you got so fired up.
Right.
That's where it kind of went south on the officer's part. You know, he definitely...
Seen both sides. As far as you guys did.
Right, so...
I mean, I was fired up last week. I'm not fired up this week.
I understand. I understand, but I, I think that we, this, this conversation would be completely different if you would've got there, even if you were upset, just a certain level of professionalism you need to keep.
Correct.
You know? And then, and then come to us and say, "Hey, this is kind of, you know, this is what happened. We could've looked at these records and, and said, "Well, you should've gotten the call regardless. You're in route. You know, you were almost on scene. You should've received the call. You shouldn't have been asked to stand down." But there just has to be that, that level of professionalism. You get there, even if you're fired up, you know, I mean, you're working with an officer. And I understand what you're saying, that officers work for citizens, but you also have the job, safety, and I'm, I'm not a police officer, so I can't really judge, but I know that it's all discretionary. I'm seeing what's happening.
Until-
Like, you don't know what happened prior to you getting there.
Correct, I was there. But prior to, prior to the, uh, firemen coming over to us while I'm talking to the officer as soon as I get out of the vehicle, you know, me and the officer probably worked it out. I would probably put to that, you know? But when he made the statement that he made about that officer's badge, I was heated while I was at route. Now I'm on fire.
I agree. You should've made that comment, but we can't control what comes out of there now.
Correct, it has. But, you know, like you said, I'm not here to point the blame or, you know, give anybody a throw under the bus. I just want to know what we can do as a whole to make everything better for everybody.
Well, let me ask you this. Prior to this situation, has things been working according to the rotation and going pretty smooth?
Everything, for the most part, yeah. Other than the fact that, uh, I've actually quit listening to the scanner because they will, you can hear it on the scanner, they, there'll be somebody from out of state, all right, getting an MVA. But it's an owner's request for San Tulli Company. You know, you, you tell me that no matter what walk of earth you come from, Pennsylvania, New York, wherever, you tell me there's everybody. I think that, back to that favoritism ordeal that the sheriff was discussing earlier, I think that maybe, just maybe, that, uh, you know, there may be some officers that I could be in the wrong and I hope that I am. But there may be some that's using their authority for an owner's request to get that company out there. Could be wrong, but could be right.
Do we only come round? Is the comm center following the policy and recording the city and state that the vehicle was registered in and the officer on scene in the public record when it is an owner request?
That's affirmative.
So can that be released along with the record report on a monthly basis? So the commission can see that and track it? So if they see that-
It, it should be already. Um, the, you have the year-to-date record report and then on the back of that, you also have the report for detail off listing.
Okay.
And it lists the registration-
And the dispatch log report. That, like, you guys get, should have all of that information in there on this side of it.
Okay.
And I, and- We'll keep an eye on that, Eric. I mean, because I, I see your point. I mean, that's, that's a valid question.
Correct.
And, you know, and, and the only thing that I would like to rebut is two things. Even after Eric showed up on scene, and I'm just going to say it as it is, he was less than professional. The officer on scene tried to make it as right as possible. He requested that Eric be put back on top of the rotation, which let me, let me say, is not standard policy. It is not standard policy for comm center. It is not standard policy for an officer to do that. If he did not want to take that tow, the officer could've said, "You lost your turn, bud, back at the bottom of the list." Theron did not do that. Comm center obliged that officer by putting him back to the top of the list. I think that shows a bit of discretion and a bit of professionalism on our part. Secondly, just because you're from out of state does not mean you do not know a local tow company. I have lived as far away as Southeast Asia, and if I would've broke down on thirty-three in my rental vehicle, I would know which tow company in this town that I would want to call because I grew up here.
Correct.
I don't think that that shows any form of, um, favoritism. I don't think it shows any form of malice. Um, I just don't know if we're ever going to get, to be able to appease all the tow truck drivers. Because if you truly look and you analyze that, that report, you're, we're, you're looking at possibly three or four toes a month. And they're all, I mean, if they miss a tow, it's going to be a while before they get their next one, do you know what I mean? And I don't know, and I honestly, I don't know how we can rectify it, um, to, so that people feel that they're not being cheated out of it, you know? Because the report is the report is the report. You know, the numbers are the numbers as they are. And I mean, I can assure you that, and from my office, if my telecommunications are given a lawful order by a police officer, a firefighter, an EMS personnel, someone who's in charge of that scene, they are going to follow that lawful order. I apologize if Eric, you know, feels that he's being cheated out of it. All I can say is, is that I, Kimber and I run that report monthly. We look at that report monthly. It's applied to kind of commission to look at monthly. There's a systems of checks and balances that I would think that if there was something askew, that one of these intelligent people in this room would be able to catch it.
Well, I think what happened is, because Eric confirmed that prior to last week, everything seems to be running pretty smoothly. I think it's just this nicely, that's-
Correct.
Things just kind of got a little, been, you just-
In response to the, uh, you know, my little professionalism toward the officer, uh, before I left the scene, me and the officer come to an agreement, man to man, we shook hands and my last words to the officer before I went with my truck was, "I appreciate you for what you've done. However, I still don't think it's right. So I will be contacting somebody else about this." And he understood where I was coming from. So to say that I was unprofessional with the officer, I mean, you guys get what you hear coming into the comm center. Not everything that we say on scene goes through communications, you know what I mean?
Okay, Eric, well, maybe you can sit down with the sheriff.
Glad to.
And partner some good relationships.
Sounds great.
Okay. Thank you for coming, please.
Thank you, Bill, over here.
No problem. Thank you, Eric.
Have a good one.
Doyle, thank you. Kimber, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
I'll show you. Your caller. Thank you, Doyle.
What's up?
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you guys have any questions?
See you, Derek.
See you, Derek.
You know what my question to you is, but never mind, I know your answer.
You're going there.
Thanks for the input.
Really.
See you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Kimber, I know you want to put this behind you. But I'll leave the call guys at this turn of the track. And we're going to work hard in the future and try to prevent this. Boy, I think we're going to come off the, uh, the madness just a little bit. Before it came in, I believe in time, like right there, I believe we could've worked through it.
Well, when you look at that, you can see both sides. But when comm center comes in and goes, "He's still responding, but he's not taking the call," then Theron doesn't have any other choice, you know what I mean? But the hell, you know, the record service, this is stuff that we don't care until finally it's all Kimber cranked that out, you know what I mean?
That's why I said to you, Monday morning quarterback, these type of issues.
Oh, they make the decisions?
One'll say yes, one'll say no, you know? And we, you know, but, you know, policy, you've got to have policy for everything.
But I would-
But there has to be some, there has to be discretion. Now, we're all hoping that the people that's out there on the front lines, maybe use this discretion. Ninety percent of the time, they're going to, because we have a good, well-trained staff. But on the other hand, and I'd be, and I'd be the first to tell the officer, if I felt that he made a discretionary call, it was way out there in left field. I don't-
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's just something kind of spiraled out, you know what I mean? Just if, if Eric, see where he's upset, but if he just would've taken, when Theron, looked like Theron recognized, well, he's here, let him take it. And then Eric refused to take it. You know, so it was one of those-
I think emotions took control.
Yeah, exactly.
You're right.
Yeah, yeah. And I think if Barry would've sat back and looked at the situation of the way everything, he would've seen that he was wrong too. I mean, you can see that up one side, down the other.
And I think, and I think Theron, you know, after he cleared the scene, he called me. I think he was concerned with his own thoughts on his discretion a little bit. And he was concerned how I was going to approach it.
And, and a lot of times, people don't understand, and being a police officer, I've got several things that I don't want to do. Last thing I want to be is stuck on an accident, you know what I mean? For thirty minutes or an hour, when I've got a hundred places I've got to be investigated and I need to be, and I am stuck on Route twenty, waiting on some record for thirty minutes when I've got another place in-
And what does thirty minutes feel like when you're out there directing traffic in a, in a heated situation? That thirty minutes seems like an hour and a half, you know what I mean?
Well, anytime you're where you want to be, it always seems longer than it actually is.
Yeah, just go to this.
And, and he could've said he was in route and Theron would've canceled Joe because he would've been there quicker than Joe would. The bottom line is, he goes ahead and tells comm center, "I'm in route, I can be down the record, but I'm not taking the call." So what kind of choice does Theron have? Say, "Send the next record, go ahead."
But Theron, at least when he got there, at least Theron said, "Since you're here, go ahead and pull it up on the-"
And I told him that when he called in the house. I said, "If you was there, if Theron told you that your first mistake was, you should've hooked to the vehicle and took it." He could've canceled Jeffries. I told him that on the phone when he called in my house.
You're on my house trial now, Eric.
What?
Facebook.
I saw this original quote.
I guess it probably gets in Facebook.
I mean, I already had the original post. It was actually, it's on Facebook. He nodded to me. Now, I was just going to quote what he quoted on the thing.
Public safety discretionary call.
Perfect.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, anything?
Ah, you're, you have history, everything, or we're not ready yet.
Okay, I asked very time, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Good day.
We'll see you now.
Thanks, Sheriff.
I'll try it in a second, guys. Um, just so I'm clear, where's the St., where's the St. Clair turn?
It's the St. Clair. State please, just before you get to the next turn or this particular accident, just have to go around the turn there, state please. The car went over the hill on the left-hand side, which means they would have stayed between LMT and BCI, which is the brick building next to it.
Right.
So it was all over on the-
Yeah, yeah.